Would you all please rise for the pledge to the flag? Welcome to the meeting. I know getting here was a problem all over, all over the city. I love this day because it's like the center of the universe. Everybody's looking for places to park and dropping kids off and things like that. So, let's start the meeting and we're gonna go through, anybody want to share anything? Any bravos, updates, or anything like that?
I wanted to, I heard very good feedback on the middle school back-to-school night the other night. I just wanted to share, so many parents were really thrilled with the kind of format of following the kids' school schedule, getting to, I view it as like kind of getting to be a student for about an hour and a half. And so, bravo to the teachers for their efforts and putting that together. It might have been a more difficult for them, but it was, I think it paid off. I know you got your experience as well.
Yeah, I thought it was cool. Good to meet each teacher and understand play. I said, "Did a good job."
Anything else?
We've got the groundbreaking on Thursday for the Tower Park Athletic Complex, what we're calling it. So, that's exciting.
I'd strongly encourage walking or carpooling. Parking will be at a premium. It'll start at 4:00, but yes, it's gonna be exciting.
We had a good opening day breakfast, so that was fun. And I also just came from the new theater teacher and the new music teacher were introduced, and there was lots of energy up there. So, it was, it was a really good event. So, I knew you went too.
Very exciting. Performing arts will be thriving in the fourth.
That's awesome. Reminder, Hall of Fame members are going to be inducted this weekend. So, they have time of the blue and white scrimmage on Friday night. And then, the dinner, which I think is pretty much sold out. Maybe you could squeak a ticket or two if you know the right people, is taking place this weekend. So, that'll be exciting.
All right, anything else? Did we miss anything?
Couple things. We're gonna start school on Wednesday. It is sort of like Christmas Eve going on here, so we're, we're excited about that. We had four regional Emmys for our film and broadcast program, which is, it's, it's like the state championship of videography in a lot of ways. But they will be eligible to compete in nationals, so we'll keep an eye on them throughout the year. Star Nationals took place, and actually, we're gonna recognize a lot of these guys next, next month. They were in Seattle. We had a student who was a top-10 gold medalist. And then, we had two students who were silver medalists. Also want to announce publicly, recognize Jennifer Nash as the new Assistant Principal at Highlands High School. So, we're, we're really excited to have a familiar face and someone who knows the community and knows the school very well. She'll be really, really great. And good luck to all of our fall sports. We're off and running.
We are off and running. Okay, the next thing we are going to do is the Tradition of Excellence Awards. I'll turn this over to you. Do you need help with those or anything?
Just hand it them out probably in just a second would be great. We'd love to get a photo. This, this is a really fun opportunity to recognize multiple people, really for some accomplishments that came at the very end of the year. So, there's the Tradition of Excellence Award, we probably give out fewer than six of them a year. I think it's about, it's been about our rate. And we're gonna celebrate with four of them tonight, just recognizing some outstanding accomplishments and support and leadership within our community. Those who are eligible for the Tradition of Excellence Award really can be someone that is nominated by a student, by a faculty member, by an administrator, or by a community member. So, anyone has the opportunity to, to recognize special contributions. So, we're gonna, we're gonna recognize first Julie Neese. Julie, if you wouldn't mind coming up. Julie is being recognized as the Kentucky Shape Middle School Teacher of the Year, which is, which is the PE, the Health and PE program. Basically, it's the Teacher of the Year for our state at the middle school level. Julie is a great advocate of nutrition and health and fitness. I think she's even had some, some national recognition and some initiatives there. And so, Julie, we're really, really proud of, of your accomplishment and celebrating. Our second Tradition of Excellence Award came at, it was a very unique conversation and an opportunity to celebrate some of what I think really makes us special. And so, we're joined here with the Hyatt family. And I'm gonna just give a little bit of background. Chrissy and Chris Hyatt both contacted me, I wanna say probably December or January, looking for some opportunities to provide some scholarships for students. Some was in memory of a mother who had passed away and was a former educator. And then, some was just to recognize some students within our program. So, they worked with multiple members at the high school to think of some of the criteria. And right from the start, it was a really neat scholarship program. So, the criteria, the scholarship was called the Fly Hire Scholarship. And the criteria really asked students to talk about what are their dreams? Who inspires them? And really how to continue to grow. And so, I thought it was, it was a really cool way to, to inspire students. But the neatest thing that I got was a, was a message that I opened up, a voicemail where, or an email where they said, "Well, we were really impressed with, with how the students interacted, how they engaged. And so, while we were gonna give two $5,000 scholarships, we're gonna award nine." So, they awarded nine $5,000 scholarships. And to inspire those who, who connected and really wanted to go, go forward, we're gonna give the other 24 applicants $1,000 each. And it was really a way where kind of jaw-dropping, and not only the monetary connection, but also just the whole idea that we can inspire kids to do more, to try harder, to be part of it. So, if I could invite the Hyatt family up, I would, we'd like to recognize them.
Thank you. I was the former counselor, and I would always tell our kids, "When you go away to school, you'll look back and go, 'Look at all these people that valued me.'" You know, "What a wonderful town." So, I love, I love that you monitor our students, so thank you. Well, we love it. Thank you.
It was really fun to watch it, awards night.
It was great. Especially for kids, I think the most important thing for us was it's about character and not so much about performance. And so, we didn't ask for a single number on our application. It's, we are really trying to encourage every student to go for their dreams, so.
And my rough man said that you supported about 14% of our senior class.
That's great. And we're also, I really hate that Chris, my husband, isn't here. He wasn't there. He's traveling for work, so we can give these scholarships. But in any events, he has a big theme of Fly Hire, which I think just works perfectly with what this community is all about. And yeah, it's, it's been a blessing to us, so thank you.
Thank you so much.
And obviously, to our kids.
Our third Tradition of Excellence Award is a gentleman who I've gotten to know a lot better over the last year and a half, and, and I'm happy to call him a friend, but, but really a great asset to the, to the city of Fort Thomas and our, our school district. Matt Kramer, if you could step up, we'd love that. Matt has been, not only because of his really good-looking haircut.
Go to the same barber.
He usually outrasses me, but that's all right. Matt has been an incredible partner for the school district. He, he has been innovative with his, with his ideas, with solutions. If we're thinking about doing something with our school district, I, I give Matt a call and some things he'll tell me, "This is why you shouldn't." And most of the time, it's, this is how you could do it better. So, he continuously offers great ideas, great solutions to potential problems. This is really enhanced, and part of the reason why we're here today is he's been a significant part of our Tower Park project. Right down to the, to the point of when we were talking about the design and how to make it fit with an eight-lane track and a, and a destination kind of location. And we showed Matt a picture of the inverted track, and, and he said, "Do that one." Because that one's best for the community. It's best for the neighbors. And if we need to move the road, we'll figure that out. So, he's been an advocate for us. He even has been a big part of supporting our initiatives with our legislators in Frankfurt, to the point that they wrote to check them out.
And he didn't run away.
He didn't run away. So, so I want to personally, Matt was even there today as we're talking about finding ways and places to do our groundbreaking this coming Thursday. So, I really, when I talk to people, I talk about the specialness of our, of our school district is that while we aspire to be the heartbeat of the community, the community is the big word in that phrase, and we do things together. So, I appreciate all your efforts, Matt, and we're happy to recognize you with Tradition of Excellence Award.
We've always had good collaboration with the city, I think. I don't know if it's just because of the project, but I know that you all talk all the time. So, Matt, I appreciate it. I know you've made Brian's life easier, maybe harder. Definitely easier, definitely. So, we appreciate it. Thank you for all the help.
And in our last Tradition of Excellence Award is another gentleman who's been instrumental in making sure that our project could, could be something that went from a really good project to a, to a very special one, and one that is, is unique, and one that will have some generational change. Representative Mike Kleins, if you could step up to the front, we'd love that. Representative Kleins and I, we go way back. He was the Blue Colonels at a time when, when we were principals together at the same time. And from that time, we've had a very strong collaboration. He came to the town hall meeting when we, when we were talking about Tower Park, and at the end said, "This is something that can connect with our entire community." And I believe the question was, "What, what can we do in Frankfurt to make it all, to see it all the way through?" And that was, that was, I don't know, about 15 months ago, possibly. And what I can say is, Mike has been a fantastic advocate for our school district, for Fort Thomas as a community. He's advocated with, with leadership in both the House of Representatives and the Senate. He has given me opportunities to get in front of, of leadership in Frankfurt. He has, he has written notes. He has made sure that the Fort Thomas Athletic Complex was, was in the budget at the, at that last moment. And he connected us with Shelley-Funke Frohmeyer to make sure that we were represented in both houses and brought some of that support. He's been a great champion in the $5 million grant that came to Fort Thomas as a result of, of the work in the General Assembly, I really believe is directly connected to Mike's work. And more than anything, we're in, we're in communication with great regularity. I believe he strongly, strongly wants Fort Thomas to be the best it can be. So, very proud to bring the Tradition of Excellence Award to Mike Kleins.
Well, I don't think that project in, in the park gets done without your help. You know, we, we've got a long history working with our, our reps in Frankfurt, from Katie Stein to Will Schroeder, everybody's been great. But I know you've been basically in this district since before you got elected. So, that, you know, I don't think I'm overstating to say that, that project isn't there and moving along without your help, so we appreciate it. And I appreciate, you know, the, I know Brian talks to you all the time about everything. I mean, you came into schools and met with the teachers as well. So, I appreciate all the support you're giving us.
Yeah, we're glad he has you guys to talk to and he can talk to us.
Well, I think frankly, this will always represent a lot of things, but it's the ability of all of us to work for the common good. So, this is AKA a Common Good Award. And speaking of the common good, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Ann Meyer for her service on the FTIS School.
Thank you very much.
That is a perfect segue, isn't it? So, our last recognition of this evening before we get into the business portion of our agenda is we are, are happy for, for our colleague and sad for us, but, but tonight is, is Ann Meyer, our Chair, Chairperson's final board meeting. And so, we want to take some time and, and share some, some thoughts, some words, give you a couple gifts, some party gifts, since you're usually the one that's giving them at faculty breakfasts and so on. Before we get into some of, some of our comments, I believe Whitney McKay is here on behalf of Fort Thomas Teachers Association.
Look how pretty that looks. But I just wanted to take a moment to thank you, Ann, for all you've done, like, from the very beginning. Like, you have been here, how many years have you been here? Like, started, I don't even know.
I came to Fort Thomas in 1988 as a teacher.
Okay.
But I graduated from here too, so.
Yeah, and so, this is a small token of our love for you. And I just want to thank you for shepherding all of us through some incredible times, but also some difficult times. When I think of you, when I was first hired, you and I were both on the counseling team, and your presence helped me become a better counselor. And I know that's true for all the counselors that were on that team. And then, you retired and ran for school board, and you did the same thing for all teachers and students. And I, it's hard for me to even imagine what life is gonna be like with you not on the board. But I'm happy, like, if you had to step down, I'm glad that we get another teacher in our district. And so, I haven't met you, Mitch, but I'm thrilled that you're here. And we just love you. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
And then, I know it looks like cake, doesn't it? I love you too. And I had Casey Getz and he's making something in there.
Oh, I can't wait.
I know, it's really cute. I have the exact same one.
All right.
So, we have a few, a few gifts on behalf of the school district, but I know that potentially a few board members have some comments as well.
Like, this is your life, isn't it?
I'll start. Well, I just, first of all, I would like to thank you for your dedication, your professional career, and then, the time you've spent since. And kind of in line with what Whitney said, I can only imagine what a wonderful educator and counselor you must have been, because the minute I was elected, you reached out to me. You made me feel welcomed, included, and I appreciated that. So, I can imagine that if you did that for kind of a fellow adult, how you must have been with children, and it must have been amazing. And I'm, and thankful for that service to the, to the district. And even, I was even thinking, even this act of stepping down is sort of in furtherance of what you feel is gonna be the best for the district, because you must, having a further educator from the Meyer family is going, is your best, you know, thought of how to go forward. And I think that that's wonderful, and thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think too, you know, when you said you made everybody else a better counselor, remember? You know, I feel the same way as a school board member. Once I, I got on, it was like, you, you have a unique ability of being able to listen to everybody, but you, you hold your ground on what you believe. And I think that I really respect that. And she is, she was a great teacher because I had her.
Ninth grade, he was a ninth grader.
And like, getting to reconnect with you later in life like this has really been, really been a joy. And I hate to see you, you know, stepping down, because it's been a lot of fun to serve with you. And I've learned an awful lot. I mean, I think that there's you, your experience in all of education, and how well you listen to others, and then, bring all of that into our meetings, and how thoughtful you are with every decision that's made, how respectful you are of, of others, but also saying, "This is what I think." And so, you've been a model board member, and it's been a lot of fun.
Thank you. Glad you've all, you've been great board members, so.
Well, I just, I want to say thank you. I, I think you have been such a, you've provided such leadership in the years you've been on the board. You've been such a calming presence, I think, for the board. Your leadership through, you know, some really hard times a few years ago, you know, sitting up there in the chair that you're in, it's not easy to, to not only help put the meetings together and run the meetings, but we had some really hard meetings. And you're just, you know, the pictures, when I look back, is your calming influence, no matter what was going on, you're the same person there, taking it in, you know, no matter, you know, how you might feel on the inside. So, I think that, that really helped us out. I mean, Whitney said it, and Clint touched on it, you made us a better board, being on here. And I think I could speak for Brad and for Lisa, for when their terms, they would say the exact same thing. I mean, you sitting in that chair and taking it and leading us through that, and then just making us, you know, giving us really something to look up to and how to behave as a board member. So, I appreciate it. I am going to, well, I'm still gonna reach out, but I have.
And I'll still give my opinions.
I, I, I love your, how in touch you are with the teachers. And we had so many conversations where I would be like, "Well, what are the teachers thinking?" And you know. And, or you just felt, you know, how they, they know. And that is, I think that part of it, we will miss. But again, those phone calls probably won't end, and we'll still need that guidance. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, I did, didn't get to take your class, but I have been a teacher with you and worked with you as a counselor. And yes, I mean, all of that, the, the level of service and dedication you've shown this district, and I think that's very indicative of kind of the Fort Thomas way, right? The graduate and returning and getting into education and following that, and then retiring and choosing to get back into the fray, because you, you thought you had great, as you did, insight to share and bring to the board. And as we've heard everyone say, that was certainly the case. And I've enjoyed working with you in, in this way, and having you as a role model in, in serving. And you are a calming presence. You have been, you know, being a leader isn't, it's tough. It's, it's ultimately having big shoulders and being able to, to carry the burden and still maintain the positive attitude and what the focus is. And the focus always, the, the North Star, the guiding light for you always was the students and the kids. And that allows you to withstand some very challenging arrows and tough times and always keep that in the forefront. And I'm glad to have had you as a shield at those times. And you did a great job withstanding that with grace and poise. And, and I only hope to be able to, to do the same thing. And, you know, thank you so much for your dedication and time. And we have a few things to share. This one, you can take Frank, but you don't have to. And then, too, you did know if you, if you end up coming, you know, wherever you may want to land, you just remind. So, thank you very much from us as a board, our fearless leader. We so much appreciate it, and you.
Thank you.
Our, our last couple things that we have, and I'd say a few words. You knew that was the topic. We talked about, about focus on students, and we talked about focus on school. And Ann Meyer represents a person that believes that the best way to, to bring out the best in our kids is, is to be better versions of us. And so, you know, it's really, I, I don't know if I've met a person that believes in, in our, in the Fort Thomas way, exactly the same way Ann does, and is able to, to lead by example where it's, "I'm gonna help you. I'm gonna help you be really well, but don't mess it up." There's gonna be a high expectation of what we do. I said to our, our teachers that if there was a Hall of Fame for educators, Ann would be on the first ballot, for sure, and would be one of the very first ones. I can't, and I get, and I've been able to see a lot of history in, in, in Fort Thomas and speak to those who have. But I would like to meet someone who's had more impact on a, on a greater number of people in a greater number of ways. We, we have a person that is a Highlands High School alum. And actually, did you go all the way through? All the way through, lawyer into Highlands, who is a, a parent of a graduate, or graduates, is, is a grandparent to kids currently in our system, who came here to teach in 1988, taught until, until 2002, only to become a counselor from 2002 to 2015. And then, went on to serve on our Board of Education from 2018 until tomorrow. And so, literally thousands of students have been, have been impacted, thousands of friends and colleagues have been impacted because of, of your service. In the time as an educator, six superintendents, five principals have come and gone since, since you've been an educator. I was not even counting the childhood years. And as a board chair, I think the intense advocacy for, for learning and high expectations, it was, it was your motto when you ran for office. It was, it was what you expected. And then, support of our teachers. Our, our teachers gave a standing ovation at our breakfast, because they, they know that, that you're right around the, right around the corner. One of the most, probably the educator I trust and admire the most. So, thank you for all that you've given to me. And congratulations to Frank and the family. We'll see if retirement sticks this time.
He doesn't think I do it well.
You don't, you don't. But we do have a couple things to give you. One is you have.
You have like a big pile over here.
Yeah, there is. Let's start with the Tradition of Excellence Award. We have a tradition, your very own. You've given them out, now it's time that you receive them for your time there. We also have for you, because you are a, a Blue Bird through and through, we have a lifetime Blue Bird Pass for you and your family. So, everywhere you go, in any event that you want to get into, I know that you'll come in. I gave another board member two of that, and I don't think you'll use.
I will use mine.
So, thank you for that one. We have a plaque that recognizes your service as our, our board chair for these last four years, and hopefully you can put onto whatever wall you have. And our last thing was, was, this was Amy's idea. She said, "You know, we gave our, our new people to our district a plant with Fort Thomas on it." And the idea is, "Watch, watch us grow into your new career." And so, we're gonna watch you grow into your retirement.
Frank will tell you about plants. Let's just say I'm better with people and pets.
Well, thank you. This is really a place of joy for me. Tonight, I went up to see the present, the meeting of the new people in the theater and the music department. And it just, I mean, people finding places to park, and children, the, just the chatter of the children, and meeting them up on stage. And some of the girls were jumping up and down. They were so excited about meeting them. You have seen kids with all their football uniforms coming in, and people going to volleyball eighth grade. I mean, it's just, in this town, the schools are the center of the universe. I mean, it's, it, that's what it is. And so, it's been a joy for me to be on the journey with so many. And I like how you talk about my advice. I think sometimes I kind of nag, but you know, thank you for giving me the time to give my opinions. But I truly felt like I was on a journey with all these children, you know? They were my kids that were going somewhere. And I love when I see them as adults and they come back and tell me they're engineers or doctors, or they're teachers, or whatever. So, now, my last thing is, you know, my father was a superintendent, so really, education is our family business. So, you know, those of you sitting around at dinnertimes, we had lots of philosophical discussions about education, and that's how my father was. My father was about, about children and about teachers. So, I kid the board about, "Don't make me come back to Community Forum." But I fully expect that you will continue doing everything right for teachers and, and for, for students. And so, you know, keep doing what you're doing, and it was a pleasure to serve with all of you. I think we have laughed, we have, you know, toiled, we have done lots of different things. But at, at the very end, it always became about what was right for our kids. And so, just keep doing that, and we'll be fine. What a wonderful place to live. It really is. So, so thank you, thank you. place to live. It really is. So, so thank you. Thank you. I will open all my gifts. I have, I usually don't have a pile of gifts over here, but thank you very much. Thanks. Alright, everyone on?
We are moving on.
Do we have anybody for Community Forum?
We do not.
Okay. So all of our guests, we're going to get into the wonderful things about paying for roofs and things like that. We will not have our feelings hurt if you want to leave for the business part because I know you probably haven't eaten and you have lives. So thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Oh, that'd be wonderful.
Thank you so much.
That's right, yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good. It's going for home.
Yeah.
Oh, it was really good. My sister loved listening to it. She was here for the summer. Not here, she's happy with here in Michigan. So I got to hang out there.
Yeah, yeah. We got first day of year. It's time really well.
Did you just make eye contact at all?
And I was like, hello.
Why doesn't it know that you're the principal?
Well, that was fun.
You know, we raise them the same and they come off to different.
Alright, Jerry, now plus James.
I know.
Thanks for dedicating you.
So we have, uh, two projects to give your reports on tonight. The first is the guaranteed energy savings contract where we have, uh, you know, I, I think I said last month or maybe the month before, we're rounding into the home stretch. We are most definitely there. We have completed, uh, the primary, uh, controls and retro commissioning, uh, at all the buildings. Are doing a little bit of tidy up work at Johnson, um, that CMTA is doing on their own. But, um, Comfort Systems has completed their work and everything seems to be as we need it to be. Uh, we have been making some minor adjustments. Uh, we kind of activated everything. Um, you know, a couple of weeks before school started to make sure things were working as we wanted them, uh, to work. And, well, we had a few bugs to work out and, you know, we, some of our older equipment that frankly hadn't run in a couple of weeks because, you know, if we didn't have people in that area of the building, we didn't run it. Um, you know, we need to do a little bit of work there, but, uh, we are in good shape as we get ready for the start of school. Um, there is a pay app tonight. It is not the final pay app. Uh, there's still a little bit of money, mostly what you would see is retainage, uh, that's left. So CMTA has presented pay application 16 for $63,382.32 and I think we're, I have less than $10,000 left.
Questions at all? Okay. Um, it appears to be doing what it's supposed to do. I mean, you know, heating where we're not and cooling where we aren't and that sort of thing. So-
And CMTA has been great to work with. We, we made some, um, requests of them last week. Uh, they were actually working, um, on another job down in Mississippi and they helped on their computers and took care of things for us. So, um, they, they have been supporting us as they said they would.
And the light portion, um, of, of the project primarily, uh, also saved about $180,000 in utility costs this year. And, and that's, that's using, um, that is using numbers, uh, that's dollar numbers. That's not necessarily units of, of savings, whatever energy numbers that they use for that. So, uh, you, you all know that energy prices don't go down. Um, and, and so while we've saved $180,000, which more than pays for, uh, for the obligation we set aside for, for the energy bonds. So that part's been great too.
Good. Okay. Uh, there's no more questions. I need a motion for the approval of pay application number 16 to CMTA Incorporated in the amount of $63,382.32 for the guaranteed energy savings contract program.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
And next up, we have the Highlands Athletic Complex at Tower Park, uh, that renovation project. Things have been going, uh, extremely well. We've received, um, for the most part, we've had great weather for the work that has to take place. Um, and speaking with Matt Morell today, he is very pleased with our current progress. Um, if you've been up there, and we hope a lot of people get to come and see the progress on Thursday at the groundbreaking. But if you've been up there, you've noticed that pretty much everything associated with the old facility is gone. Um, you know, the, uh, retaining wall, uh, completed in phase one by Rigler is, um, has been constructed and, uh, Morell's been working hard on the retaining walls on the backside of the property. Uh, you can't see much of them because they are either over the hill or underground. Uh, but rest assured, uh, they have spent a lot of time and effort, uh, on the, that retaining wall. Um, you can, I feel, again, I know the project better than, than most, um, but I feel you can really start to see definition on where the field's going to be, where the track's going to be, where the parking lot's going to be, where the new drive's going to be. Um, we had hoped that Rigler, as part of phase one, would have the road further along because we were trying to get that road done in order to, uh, create some pedestrian pathways, uh, for the community back there. Um, they're working on it, but, uh, things are going a little bit slower than we would like. Uh, we are communicating with them and trying to urge them as quickly as we can. They're just trying to get, they have to get the sewer work done that's underground before they can start working, you know, backfill above that and then start laying the curbs, the sidewalks and the base for the road.
Are they going to try to do any kind of temporary, like road or access for everything that's walking or anything like that?
It, it, we, we're working with both Rigler and Morell so that once the base coat of asphalt for Army Reserve is in, Morell is planning on moving their fencing to roughly the middle of that. That would create a path for people to walk and, you know, walk bikes or ride bikes. Um, it's not going to be wide enough for vehicles to go through there. Uh, but there, you, there will be a connection, um, a safe connection between the neighborhood and the park. Uh, we'd hope that would be very close to being done, but as I said, we're just, they're running behind. So my, my hope is that by this time next month, we were reporting that that work is done. Uh, but it's, it's, as you've been hearing me talk for about the last 19 years, I really don't get up here and guarantee a whole lot.
Is that, is that what you're thinking about another month on that?
Um, based upon conversations, yes. Um, but I also thought, um, I would see, uh, curbs by now and I don't. So.
Well, we're excited. Um, you know, when you go to a lot of places and have a lot more land than we do, you know, because we're so landlocked. So anytime we can make improvements to, to where we are. And I know that you all have worked, Brian, you worked really, really hard and, and Clem and Jeff, um, on this project, on this committee. So, um, congratulations. We're excited about it.
It is neat to see all, uh, Tower Park because you, you are starting to be able to see how it's going to come about.
It, it's, it's a unique thing, uh, for us because for the most part, uh, you're going to be able to view all of the work that's being done. Pretty much everything's going to be out in the open and visible except for the construction of, uh, the two buildings and the, and grandstands with the press box. And even good portions of that will be out. So people, we do get a lot of visitors and then, um, I, I, I won't necessarily say a lot of questions. People are very, so far have been very respectful, um, now that the fencing's up. Um, but, you know, we do get some questions and, and they're, they're, you know, uh, rave reviews so far.
And it's, while, while it's a groundbreaking, uh, the, the ground is clearly broken. So it'll, it'll be a, it'll be a ceremony, uh, of our start and, and it's going to take place up by the stables building, uh, in the, the upper lot. Um, but again, I'll emphasize again, I'd tell, tell your friends to try to get there and, and celebrate it, but we'll, we'll have our speakers where, where you'll see the, the work coming together behind us. So it'll be great.
I know it's a mess up there. So, uh, has Morell seen any, anything unusual, any surprises as they've started digging and?
None, none so far.
Okay.
None so far. So, um, when they, when they do get into work a little bit on that hillside, um, where Sargent Avenue was moved, there's always the potential. But, uh, we also worked extensively, um, with VIOX as well as, well, Geotechnologies has changed their name again, but to me they're always going to be Geotechnologies. Um, they did exhaustive investigative work. So we're hoping that we don't run into anything significant.
I know our next, next up kind of be getting the land, uh, leveled out, letting it settle and all that. What kind of weather, all the dry, what do they want for that? They, they need some, some rain? Do they want it dry? Do you have any idea there?
Some repulsor.
We, we have, you know, they, they are utilizing, um, lime to an extent to make sure that the, that everything stays dry so they can work on it. And, and that has a residual effect. We saw that, uh, the, you know, the area of, uh, the temporary Johnson, you know, that one half of the field where we had the line to build the temporary, uh, mobile village, uh, got significantly drier over the, the half that we did not. So, so there'll be that residual effect that they feel will help that along. So.
It's exciting.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. I need a motion for the approval of pay application number two to Morell Construction Company in the amount of $646,758 for the Highlands Athletic Complex at Tower Park project.
So.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you.
Go on.
All right. Are you next, Brian?
Um, last year we, we, um, went, uh, we, we tried this initiative and, and, uh, again, in the post pandemic world, attendance has, has been a challenge across the state, uh, for, for students and, uh, and faculty and staff. Um, I would say we've, we've had fairly good attendance comparatively, um, but not necessarily what, what we would like it to be, uh, big picture. Um, so we would like to, to continue an incentive, uh, where, uh, where we recognize those with perfect attendance at the end of the year, but we also have a monthly drawing for all staff, uh, and faculty who, who have perfect attendance each month. Um, it's fun to draw. Uh, it's fun to do. Um, and it's also fun to recognize, uh, those who are, who are able to, to be recognized. So, so we ask, uh, for the board to approve. It's, it's two $50 Amazon cards, uh, for the monthly drawing and a, and a hundred dollar, um, card for anybody for, who, who achieves all year long.
Okay. Questions?
No, I mean, as we've talked about, like, uh, the monthly piece is nice. So then everybody gets a restart. So that's nice. Then obviously a known honor for getting through the whole year. So that's great.
Okay. I need a motion for the approval to authorize the superintendent to award a yearly perfect attendance bonus and develop monthly incentive drawings September of 24 through May of 25.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. All right, Jamie.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Here to talk about policies. And we have two things to feed me that I'd like to share. The first one is a creation of policy 09.226. It's title conduct on a bus. In previous years, we did not have it specifically. It wasn't a mandatory policy. And since we are not a mandatory transport district, uh, that we did not have this adopted. However, this policy draft that I'm giving you is from KSBA and it is the draft policy very similar to other districts that do have this in place. I'm bringing it to your recommendation, to my recommendation to give to you this evening because, uh, the legislature this past year did indicate that we have new requirements for communicating conduct to our parents and to our students who travel by bus. And so we've missed this piece in board policy. We have it. There are procedures. The transportation director's manual very clearly says what students shall do, what the responsibilities are. And all of that is included in our OLR. So parents do see that now, but we felt that it was important and necessary for us to have a policy as well that had the same or similar language. So this is, um, supported by our transportation director and it is our understanding that other districts are leaning on this to comply with that new mandate.
Okay. Questions at all? Okay. I need a motion for the tentative approval of policy 09.226 based on a first reading of the policy revisions.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Okay. Our second policy to consider this evening is our Title One Parent and Family Engagement Policy. We do have a current policy titled that. However, based on feedback that we received at our consolidated monitoring visit, it is that, um, we need to add details to be in compliance for our, our, um, consolidated monitoring evidence. And so it is that we have given general statements in our sample that we have. They are laid out by KSBA. But if you are a targeted assisted or school-wide program for Title One, the state is looking to make sure that we're federally compliant as well. And so it's really asking the question of how are we doing it? So I have had to add some details based on what our Title One schools actually are doing and placed evidence in this policy. So it's not changing how we operate. It's providing more language or more, more detailed language so that anyone looking at that can see how we're working through our parent and family engagement policies. We are having annual meetings. We are inviting stakeholders to receive feedback and reviewing. And then the actual events themselves, keeping them involved, giving them reports, inviting them to parent teacher conferences, newsletters, those things as well.
Questions? All right. I need a motion for the tentative approval based on the first reading of the parent and family engagement policy.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. You up?
Our last action item, um, we, we've celebrated Ann Meyer, but we haven't officially accepted her, her letter of resignation.
We might not.
But yeah.
What happens if we go now here?
It's uncharted territory. We'll have to explore. Uh, so, so we have received a letter, uh, from Ann that, um, that has offered her intent to resign effective tomorrow. Uh, and it is, that, that becomes a resignation at the approval of the board and acceptance of the board.
Okay. Questions?
Are you sure? Yes.
All right. I need a motion for the approval to accept resignation from Ann Meyer as board member from the Fort Thomas Independent School Board of Education effective August 13th, 2024, creating a vacant seat. All those in favor? Oh, no.
You have a motion.
I was trying to get technicality.
You have to get, I know. Nobody wants to make a motion.
Yeah.
Sadly, I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Hold, I suppose? There you go.
That would have been a good spot for that.
It would have been.
We'll save that.
It's your old net.
We'll save that when Brian's not expecting it.
It's more fun.
That happened the first time.
Okay. Now we're going to go to discussion items.
Yes. Uh, we just have one discussion item on, on this afternoon's agenda. Uh, each year, uh, when, when we work as a, as a, as a board team, um, we consider some areas of emphasis going into the next school year. Uh, these areas of emphasis are, are discussed at working board meeting, um, in, in a decent amount of depth. Um, it's based on some of the, um, some of the data and, and, and evidence that we bring from the previous year, but then also encompasses a lot of the conversations that we have throughout the year of, of what we can do to be better versions of ourselves and, and impact our students and opportunities and experiences in new, in different ways. Uh, from the board meeting, uh, then we, we take this information and, and we vet it with our district-wide leadership team. Uh, so all principals, assistant principals, directors and assistant superintendents have had opportunities to, uh, to offer suggestions, to offer ideas, to, to suggest, uh, clarifications. And I think it's important to say that, that our areas of emphasis, um, they come as a result of some of the strategic, um, strategic focus work and strategic plan work, uh, through our leadership and implementation team. So, so they're, they're not invented topics. They're, they're definitely stakeholder influenced. Um, and then they become the, the heart of, of the goals that, that we have as a team and I have personally, uh, as I develop my personal growth plans. Uh, we maintain the same four big categories this year, um, around making sure that we enhance, um, the status as a destination district for our teachers, staff and families. Um, that we, um, we, we continue to implement our strategic plan. That we, we, we continue to implement our strategic plan, that we maintain that instructional focus and that we expand our, our partnerships and voice. And so I don't necessarily want to go through every bullet here. I, I think it's important as a destination district, a couple of highlights that, that we'll, we'll get into our work this year. Continuing the progress we've made of, of being at the top of the list to, to attract and retain staff is, is an important thing that this board has, has voiced is, is an area of, of focus and, and our emphasis and, and our goals. We will start in LPC, our Local Planning Commission this year. We'll convene throughout the year to create our district facility plan so that we are not only focused on, on those basic needs, but that we can also dream a bit of what's that next generation facility drive that can, that can bring more experiences and opportunities to our kids, our students. We, we have some intentional focus around attendance and stakeholder engagement. And then again, looking deeply at, at making sure our budgets are supporting all of our work there to, to attract the best. And that includes families that are, that are coming to, to our district as well. In the strategic plan, one of the highlights that will come out as we go through our leadership, leadership implementation team work will be around developing a pilot for defensive learning projects. And so Mr. Faust and, and the Fort Thomas graduate team will be having some ideas as to how we can pilot even this year and then roll out in future years, have students reflect on their experience and key transition points. Perhaps fifth, eighth, twelfth, as, as they, they reflect on, on, on their achievement and engagement. In the instructional realm, we will continue, we, we had really great progress in our multi-tiered systems of support or MTSS focus last year. We want to continue to enhance that and, and really make sure that we're living it. We will also begin our, our math curriculum alignment and adoption of resources this year. We've had two really active years in, in English Language Arts as well as Social Studies. So this year will be math and then one of our areas of focus will be, should we give a little bit of a breather for some of those core areas as we go into that following year. And then we also want to emphasize real-world application and transfer of learning in, in intangible ways where students are, are more experiential learning, more applied learning experiences. And then the last part around expanding partnerships and voice, we want to continue to, to identify connections with our, our extended stakeholder groups. So our site-based councils, our, our education foundation, the city council. And how do we make sure that we maintain those relationships? We, we seek opportunities to connect together and keep that unified approach together. But then also, how do we collaborate with some, some regional partners to, to give students out of the, out of the classroom opportunities to extend their learning, particularly at the, at, at the high school level? But some little samplings at, at our other levels as well. Jamie or Keith, anything that, that I, that you would have highlighted? You're like, there's, there's only a hundred and fifty bullets, but you highlighted a few. Anything that you would have suggested that we missed? And, and this is really a, a board development too. So if there's anything that you would like me to highlight that, that maybe didn't jump out or any questions, I would be happy to expand.
I've had my memory as best as I can from our retreat and related everything, but it's all good.
That sounds like enough. But, you know, we can achieve those, those things or definitely work towards them. It's a process.
Well, we appreciate, it's the three of you that work really, really hard to make plans and make us better every day. So, you know, I guess what do they say in soccer, living life with your head up? You know, trying to figure out what's gonna be the next thing, where do we have to go? So it's a big, long list of those.
It is.
Yes.
It really encompasses a great team, so that's good. That's all I have on this.
Okay. Board committee updates?
We gave the Hall of Fame dinner.
Hall of Fame?
Saturday, I think that's about it right now.
We had the breakfast last week and we had great sponsors, lots of different sponsors that, that gave us money and we'll have a little bit left to continue to feed teachers through the, through the school year as well. So it was good.
We could use a volunteer.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll still help. I'll still help. He's my one that drives the car as I take food to people. So I am kind of a feeder by nature, so it's not hard. But that's another thing. I, it was very joyful last Thursday. It really was. It was very, was it Thursday? Yeah. It was very joyful, so that's what we're going for. Okay.
It was very nice. You did a really good job putting it together.
Well, thank you. Amy was awesome helping for, for Amy. This is her first year, but, you know, she's got notes again for next year. So, and I told her I'd help her next year too, so it's good. All right, any others? Okay. Then we need the approval of the consent agenda. So I need a motion with all the board members having had the opportunity to review and pursue any questions about all of the items contained therein for the approval of the consent agenda. Need a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
Second? All right, all those in favor?
Did somebody second? I'll second.
Oh, did you second?
No. I will, I'm second now.
Second to now. All right, Julie's second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right, and next thing is any other business? All right, and then the last thing, we're gonna go into executive session. So, all right, I need a motion for the approval to enter into executive session at, time is it, seven-twenty-eight per KRS, this is all white, six-one, eight-one-zero-one, is that F F? Which might lead to the appointment of an individual member. I need a motion for that. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And there's no expectation for action that would come out of this meeting today?
No, just a little late discussion, so. Okay. All right, thank you. Oh, yeah. No, I'm not adjourned yet, but, yeah, this marks a adjournance. Yes, thank you.